Good evening. The time is 6:30, and I would like to call this regular session of Chardon City Council order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation with our God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Blackley?
Here.
Mrs. Tuha?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Mr. Lelko?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Means?
Here.
Mr. Molesky?
Here. Before moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, I want to thank Dave Lelko and his wife for bringing us these beautiful cookies decorated in a holiday fashion.
The other thanks should go all to her, not...I had no part in making them, so they are edible.
Thank you, Freddie. They're delicious.
You're Uber.
Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of Minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes for November 10th regular session? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Call the roll.
Mrs. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lelko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the November 17th special session minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Exactly. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Call the question.
Mrs. Tuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Lelko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Five, Managers' Report. Randy?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Few things tonight to report on. As I stated in the Managers' Activity Report update a couple of weeks ago, Chris Moore tendered his notice to retire as Superintendent of the Streets, Cemeteries and Parks at the end of the year on the 31st of December. Chris celebrated 31 years with the city in November 18th of this past year. He started as a maintenance worker in November of 1991 and has been with us since then. Rose all the way up through the ranks and became appointed to the Superintendent of the Division on February 4th of 2019. And of course, we wish him nothing but the best on his next stage of life and a lot of a very long and healthy and happy retirement. Along the same lines with employees, interviews continue for the position of the maintenance worker in the Division of Streets, Cemeteries and Parks. We've actually had some interviews with me. We're moving through. We have a conditional offer out. We'll see if that gets filled hopefully soon. And we're working on the same thing for replacing Chris and what we'll do with that. Third bullet is, several weeks ago, we had a few complaints from residents down in the Woods of Burlington on loud noises that were stated to be actually shaking their homes. We've talked about it, you know, the blast. We're assuming that they're coming from south of the city, outside of the city. I'm not aware of any alleged damage being caused by the blast, but in talking with our law director at this point, it's a private property issue. If something, it needs to be done. Those property owners need to go to the offending party and have a discussion on what's going on there. As a side note, I did reach out to Monson, one of the Monson Township trustees, who has said that the Best Sand, who was in that area, does have permits to blast, but I do not have any idea how those permits work, if there is certain decibels or certain amount of explosives that they can use or anything like that. So if this continues, you know, we need to be made aware, and if we can help our residents in every way, shape, or form, we will, but right now, it would be a private property issue.
I'm glad you mentioned that because I felt it and I thought I was just, it was just me. It would be nice if, if it is Best Sand, and I would think it would be, who else would be blasting that? Wow. If we had some kind of notification that we could let people know that when the house does shake, they know what it is. I thought maybe we had an earthquake, or I thought something, maybe just my own house. But anyway, it'd be nice just to be able to...
I haven't had anything since, you know, that I'm aware of.
Yeah, we could hear them loud and clear on Water Street, so...
Right.
Yeah.
Especially if the police knew, if someone...one time I called dispatch a while ago and said, hey, did any report of an earthquake or something, you know?
I know that, I saw online, you know, there's been several threads about this, and one of them, they just reached out to Best Sand directly. So that might be, you know, you could just try reaching out them directly and asking them if that's something that they could provide.
Randy, is that something staff, either you or the chief, somebody could reach out to Best Sand directly and just ask if we could be notified ahead?
We can certainly ask. I don't know if there's anything that would require them to actually do it, but we can...
Just as a good neighbor type thing?
Doesn't the ODNR have oversight?
I don't know who does.
Through mining?
Through mining.
I would guess. Can we look into that?
I don't know if we need to at this point.
Okay.
I mean, right now, it's been some loud noises, you know, and...
Yeah, they were, I mean, they were loud. We thought something blew up and, yeah. So it's pretty freaky. Okay.
Yeah, it's more just a notification to let people know that it's to be expected or if we know what it was and it wasn't something...
And then we'd have to think through how would that notification process work?
Even if just...
You know, we could put it up on our website if they were agreeable to give it to us, if they know ahead of time when they're going to be blasting, how much the frequency is. We could put it up on our website and things like that, but...
Years ago, they even had signs out sometimes on...
Yeah, they do have signs, they do have signs out.
Do they still?
In the area, do they?
They did have them out, yeah.
We'll look into it and see.
And tell them we're just doing it as a, just to notify residents so they're aware of what's going on. Thanks.
As in the past, per the agreement that the city has with Waste Management, a roll-off will be provided for the Christmas tree drop-off program. It'll be starting on January 3rd and go through the 23rd of January, Monday through Saturday, 7 to 4, and they need to be brought down to the street garage, actually near the salt bin, is where the roll-off will be for collection. Absolutely no decorations, no ornaments. If they have them on there, we won't accept them. This past Sunday, Shop with a Cop program went very well. A lot of different participants, members of the Police Department, dispatch, Councilman Grau, Councilman Means, Councilman Tuha. I'm looking at you. Were there?
Quite a bit.
Seven families, 15 children, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And of course, with the FOE, the Fraternal Order of Eagles and their large contribution, it made for a very successful day and definitely made some families very happy. Anything you want to add, Chief, to that?
Just to the staff, most of the officers that are there are volunteering their time and dispatchers and so forth. Had a pretty good showing this year of officers, which really makes that a special day for the kids. In this case, there were 15 kids that we shopped for and that our group of hardy volunteers wrapped for some unique objects that they wrapped this year. So it was a good job by everybody involved and the community, the business community and gracious donors that, they're the ones that really make that possible. So much appreciated. Thank you.
And thanks to Walmart for their accommodations and their assistance. And it was, Chief, it was, it was fantastic.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Those kids and their families just overjoyed with what they were walking out of the store.
When you, when you hear the stories from the kids and you know that, you get to hear about what the circumstances are that they're coming from, it's, it's special for sure. Thank you.
Moving on to Public Works Projects Update for the Chardon Living Memorial Park Phase Two, no update. Center Street Sidewalk Infill Project, no update. The Hidden Glen Waterline Loop, the Ohio Public Works Committee, the OPWC, their Executive Committee and their Integrating Committee met on the 17th of November, and both committees approved a slate for around 37 projects to be considered for submission down to the state level. Typically, when that happens, those are awarded. I've never heard of one come back not being awarded. And the Hidden Glen Waterline Loop Project is in that and is recommended to be funded with a grant of $250,000 and a loan of $150,000. So that project is hopefully on the move again and will happen next year. Seventh Avenue Repair Widening and Extension Project Design continues to get that one so we can have that next year. And then there's no update for the Maple Highlands Trail Stream and Weapon Restoration Project. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Randy, is there anything planned for Chris Moore, get together luncheon, something?
I have not heard of anything. That doesn't mean that it's not being...
Well, he'll be missed. Chris was, was great in many capacities and appreciate everything he did for the city for so long.
Hmm.
All right. Are there any other questions for Randy?
Hmm.
Thank you, Randy. Moving on to Planning Commission Report. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, we had two meetings in November. We had our regular meeting on November 15th. We had a presentation by an architect, Tom Paul, Paul Architects, regarding 400 Washington Street. This was, as you, most of us will remember, is the old Ryans Trucking Site. There's a long building there with the truck docks. So this, we gave them approval of basically doing some siding and roof work to weather, to weatherize the building. But we did not, however, approve any, any other occupant, occupation or use of that building, just to basically do work. They already were in progress doing the work when they were discovered doing it, and they were made to come to Planning Commission and get approval for it. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So that was done, and hopefully they'll, they'll come back to Planning Commission at some point with some good viable commercial use for, for that facility. Then we had a special meeting on October 29th, and we had four items on the agenda, three of which are on our, on our, on our agenda this evening on Platts, so I won't go over those in any detail right now. But the main item on our agenda that you'd be interested in was that we approved renovations to the front columns at the Mark Store. And again, same architect, Mr. Paul came in and presented, and I think it's going to be a very worthwhile and attractive reconstruction of those columns. They're going to be losing the so-called cultured stone that's down there now around those columns. It's not very, it's deteriorated very badly, and they're going to be replacing it with a, a sort of a precast concrete and brick column that will be compatible and, and look very similar to the other columns in the, in the, in the, in the Chardon Plaza Shopping Center. So I think that will be, end up being an attractive addition. Just quickly on the Platts, we've got a vacation plant for Memorial Drive, another vacation plant for Sixth Avenue, and we will also be dealing this, this evening with a dedication plant of utility easements for the Redwood Development off Seventh Avenue. Steve, you have anything you want to add to that?
Nope, I think I covered both meetings.
And like I said, those last three are going to be on our agenda later this evening, and I'll just leave that to then. That's the report.
Very good. Anyone have any questions for Andy? All right, thanks again, Andy. Agenda Item Number Seven, Council Committee Reports. Economic Development Committee, Kyle and Heather, to present the Think Local website. Kyle?
Actually, I'll let Heather show the progress of the Think Local...
Yes.
Website.
So as council recall, funds were approved to create a business directory for Think Local, and we are just about ready to launch it. It's probably tomorrow it will go live. So I wanted to show you what it looks like.
Steve, can you hit the bottom of the TV? There's a button on the bottom to turn it on. This won't...right in the middle, in the middle, next to the light.
So, let's see here. There we go. So this is the version one of our Think Local website business directory, and we are still making a couple of edits. One of the cool features on this is that we can add rotating pictures on the homepage, and so we are waiting to get some so that we can have some seasonal photos as well. Down here at the bottom, talks about why shop local. It talks about how and reminds folks about when they support their local business communities and their local businesses, small, you know, and, and keep their money in their community, how it positively impacts the community, how our business owners in our community support not only each other, but they support local civic groups, the schools, and, and, you know, that they make a positive contribution and how that just keeps circulating around the community. So this is our Think Local homepage. From here, there's buttons on the Chardon City website that will lead you to here. This is what our directory looks like. We have put in by category, which we're going to be doing some edits as we go along and as we hear back from the business community about where the businesses need to be moved around, whether we need to create categories. It's very simple to use and to create categories. So if we go in here under Accounting and Financial Services, it pulls up the ones that are listed here in Chardon, and it also has a link to their website. So one of the most challenging parts of working on this is just getting the data in order. That has taken quite a bit of time. That has been, and Steve has been a really big help with that. He has all this, you know, legacy information about these businesses. I mentioned to you before that we drove around, we actually drove around town and we tried to physically confirm if we didn't know, and so, and we still got, we still got some of them wrong. So, you know, so we're going to, after we are live in the community, we're going to ask all of our civic groups and our business organizations to make sure they're sharing this, put it on the, on the sign, on the square, put it, and just try to get the word out there, reminding folks to go take a look at it, see if your business is on there correctly, if we need to switch something or, or fix a link. You can see, there's quite a bit. It was interesting when, you know, as we were going through, to realize how many and what different types of businesses are in Chardon. And we actually just added three new ones today. We have, because we have a couple of new businesses that just opened. So we're really hoping that this helps drive traffic to local business sites, and when somebody is looking at Chardon and they're, they're navigating from our website, that they'll be able to see, you know, that this is a pretty robust business community. We have a pretty robust business community. On the contact page, what we have here is, and this probably will get modified once we, you know, once we get a little farther into this, we have on here, if you'd like to update a business listing or have a question, you fill out the form, it automatically sends it here to the city. Initially, these are going to come to me so I can make updates and edits to the business directory as needed. So it's pretty straightforward. Next part of this is getting some clings for business, local businesses that have the Think Local logo on them, and that'll be another way that we can let businesses know that this exists, and also just to get people more involved.
Heather, how many businesses do you know?
Well, the database has 480, which I can tell you that Steve and I went through, and we were like checking every single one, every link. We asked Kyle to look at it, Amy looked at it, the city manager looked at it, and, and we still are going to have some edits to make. But I think the more accurate number, Steve, would you think the more accurate number is probably, what?
400 to 4-ish.
It's probably 450 is probably a closer number. So, I mean, truly just trying to get that down, so...
Heather, is that within the ZIP code, 44024?
No, it's Chardon, it's just the city of Chardon.
Just the city?
Just the city.
Wow.
I know, it's amazing how many businesses are actually here.
And if there's a business that they see that they're not included, they just contact you and then they...
Yeah, they can contact directly, they can contact the city directly, they can fill out the form, and literally, we can do it, you know, it, it takes a minute to add a business.
It's a huge asset, this work, to all involved. And you said that's going to launch...
Well, hopefully it'll launch, I'd hope to have it for you tonight, but it's not, there's one little thing that's holding it up. But as you can see, Amy's already added it to the website, the homepage, and so you'll click on the button, it takes you right to those pages. It's also located under the Economic Development section of our website as well. And hopefully, this will be the start of a bigger, you know, program that we can continue to expand on. Kyle and I have talked about, like, the next step for us in economic development is to try to beef up the website, the, the pages and information that's on the website for the city. And again, you know, part of this is that when somebody's looking at the city and perhaps thinking of putting a business here, that they, you know, their first impression is going to be, you know, a really positive one. Okay?
That's again excellent.
Looks nice. Turned out, yes.
Very impressive.
Anything else from, no? I know you have an econ meeting coming up on the 12th, is that correct?
Yes, Steve.
And was the, as we discussed last month, this hotel feasibility study, is that making any progress? Is that, are we waiting on something else or?
I believe it's in the temporary budget, so once we start 23, we'll be able to start working on that.
Okay. Okay, well done. Okay, thank you, Kyle, Heather, Steve, and all involved with Think Local website. Any other questions for Heather or Kyle? Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, those persons on the agenda. Mary Briggs is here tonight requesting permission for some holiday displays. Hey, Mary?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, you won't be heard unless you stand up here at the...
Can I remove the mic or no?
Mic.
Oh, you want to, you want to sit? What works for you? I think that'll move. Won't move.
You're good. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Department Heads and Staff. So for approximately 30 years, I have wanted to see a more diverse representation on Chardon Square than, during the holiday season, than the major. I had a wonderful conversation in 2021 with Randy Sharp about my desires. I didn't have to roll up my sleeve and say ACLU. I was embraced by the concept of having a menorah and kwanzaa representation on the square. So it was, I haven't been able to raise the money until right after the Kristallnacht Celebration honoring this past November 9th, and we've acquired decorations in anticipation of it being approved, and I, hopefully you all have percent copies. This, this year, it would be a lighted menorah, like a pre-manufactured display. It would also include a dreidel, which is a child's game that's played during the Hanukkah season. And, and then separately, in a different part of, where I'd like to have it on the square, is something representing kwanzaa, which is an African-American-based holiday celebration. I, I did try to be proactive and reached out to Mr. Butts ahead of time last week, but I haven't heard from him to find out what, besides decorations, that I need to supply, you know, extension cords, a timer, so that, or they could be lit 24 hours, or I, I haven't inspected your previous decorations. And, and this year, it would be lighted and, and hopefully in the future, an actual menorah, which is quite a bit more expensive, but these are expensive decorations also. But I've had actual Chardon businesses reached out to me about possibly helping with the more expensive menorah in the future. And Chagrin Falls this year, for the first time, has a menorah in one of their riverside parks, which is in Ghar County, but it's still, it's my hometown. Any question? I, I sort of put where the location, my hope for the location would be, would be approximately, it would be in, in the park, across from Beans, since across from the Tattoo Parlor is now the Snowflake, and I'd have the menorah, and to the left of the menorah, you know, the dreidel. And the kwanzaa would be at an angle at the southwest corner of the square, where people could see it. I mean, when I was, at the stop sign, you can see a section, it wouldn't be blocked by the, the kiosk or however your, your lip sign. And I'm, I, I put in there the potential. I don't know the lighting, I mean, there's people from the Jewish faith, I'm a Gentile, that would like to see it lit on Sunday, December 18th, which is first night of Hanukkah. And I don't know if, if once we get it installed, if it would just be plugging it in to turn the lights on, or, or how to manage that. That's why I was trying to reach Mr. Butts ahead of time.
We're not in a position tonight, Mary, to say where they'll, where they'll end up going, okay?
Pardon me?
We're not in a position tonight to describe where they'll go on the square yet.
Ah.
Okay. But as far as the assistance with, through Mike Butt and anybody else, we'll, we'll let you know what is needed. So at this point, you're saying you're not supplying an extension cord?
No, I have funds for it.
You do, okay.
I just didn't, that's why I called him last week, and he never got back to me.
Okay, well, he'll, he'll go through Randy, but...
Oh, okay.
The other, we just, you know, the, the quality of the, the displays is a little bit of a concern, but you, you have what, you have a budget that you're...
Well, we've already spent over $500.
Okay. All right. And...
And the quality is hundreds of dollars each. They've already arrived.
I'll interject here, if I may. Just reading the information that you gave us, Mary, it says it comes with, for the, for the menorah, it comes with a sturdy metal frame for hanging and a display easel. The dimensions are 54 inches high, 50 inches wide, and a three-quarter inches deep, so it's, it's like this. It's, so it's pretty small, actually, compared to everything else we have up there. I'm just kind of worried about all of them being lost in that their size isn't, in ratio of the size of everything else that's up there. The dreidel's 32 inches, so once we have some snow, and then the kwanzaa signs, I think the biggest one was 20 inches. Is that right?
Well, the menorah is 54 inches high and 50 inches wide.
Hmm.
And the dreidel is 32 inches high by 20 inches wide, and the kwanzaa displays are kind of like yard signs.
They're like plastic yard signs, 16 and three-quarter inches, looks like the biggest one. I'm just saying that with the snow that we get, a lot of these are going to be not seen very well. And then just the, the menorah being flat, it's really not 3D.
Correct.
It'll be a different look than the other things that are up there.
Granted. But the menorah itself for next year is six, over $1,600.
Yeah, I'm sure that the things that Chardon Square has brought are, have been very expensive as well.
I mean, I could...
Not our size and scope.
Use straw bales to raise it up, and I was thinking of, you know, yard sign poles, so I wasn't really worried about going very deep to anchor them.
Putting the plastic yard signs on extension poles?
We, yeah. Or having them placed into some straw bales to raise them up at least that much. I mean, we have blacks in this community, we have Jewish people in... I mean, we have blacks in this community, we have Jewish people in this community, and they're not representative, I'm on a government property, and I was hoping to be embraced by this potential. And it was the director, the, I wasn't thinking about this year until the President Emeritus of Cole Israel, who was one of the speakers this past, uh, Kristallnacht, said maybe we could do it this year. And it was, and she's also on the Ohio, appointed by Dwyane on the Ohio State Holocaust and Genocide State Committee, and she saw this as, you know, a way to, with the, for small-town America to recognize the diversity of the community. And when she recommended it, I started raising money, and somebody was gracious enough, even though, well, we have it now, but she put it on her credit card so that it would arrive in a timely manner.
So, Mary, you wanted the, as far as the, the menorah and the dreidel, you want those up by December 18th?
They could be up during, you know, you're working, I, I don't even know who installs things, because the person didn't get back to me, but I, I'd make myself available. And, and if it's, if it's only plugging it in to, to connect the electricity, you wouldn't need a parks person to do the lighting, if that makes sense.
Well, why don't, Randy, why don't we just have, we'll have a mic, but through Randy, we'll reach out to you during the week, well, next week?
All right.
Okay? And then choose a date that would work for you to deliver...
I want to do press releases, because the Cleveland Jewish News is running it, and I would send it out to News Herald, Cleveland, Plain Dealer, Maple Leaf, and Chagrin Valley Times slash Juaga Courier, and their deadlines are the beginning of the week. So, if it's next week, I, I need to do a press release on the lighting night.
I'm, all I'm doing is through your rec, you would like them up on the 18th, so it'll need to be installed on the 15th or 16th.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
So, sure that...
So, it could be the 18th.
Someone reaches out to you, and verify the, if you, you bring everything that you have, let, let our staff know what, outside of the display themselves, what you're bringing as far as a timer and/or, uh...
What?
Uh, extension cords.
But how long the extension cords need to be?
Uh, we'll let you know. We build the, once we determine where they're going to go, then we'll make sure that you understand that you're going to need 50, 100, 150, whatever it is.
Correct.
And then, I don't know how you accommodate a waterproof timer and all that, but I'm sure that you have a...
And I don't, I honestly don't know how, what we do for the nativity scene. Whatever we do for the nativity scene, we'll do for you as well. If we provide the extension cord and the timer, then we'll do that for you as well.
Yes, sir. I do have the funds set aside to be able to go to Chardon Business to purchase the extension cords and timers, but I didn't want to do that ahead of time, not knowing the lengths or...
Okay, and then, as far as the end of next week for putting things up, as far as your kwanzaa display, are you recommending, you're saying that that goes up on the 26th, so...
Well, it begins then, but it, it can, like, the manger, I mean, yes, he was born on Christmas Eve, and it's been up for some time, so I, I don't feel constrained by the timing of placing that.
Why don't we just let you know, Mary, whether we are going to bring everything at the same time, or there's going to be two different?
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes, sir. I guess my question is, given whatever the weather may be bringing in the next week or so, are we in a position to act this year on something like this? I mean, this is December 8th, we're talking in the next week or two. Week, next week. Right? I don't know. My, my calendar's... I mean, that's what, that's what hits me.
If there's any snowstorms and our guys are plowing, we won't be helping put these up. We'll be plowing. But I, I don't think this is a real heavy lift, though, either, Dave.
Okay.
There's not, you know, running an extension cord and then meeting Mary out there, and it sounds like these just get stuck in the ground, there's no...
I mean, do we know?
There's no bases, or...
Do we have enough power out there? Do we have?
We have five outlets in the area, two in close proximity to where Ms. Briggs designated where she wanted the menorah, the dreidel, and the kwanzaa signs, so there's, there's outlets.
I have a question, Mary. Are these intended just to be used only this year? I get, to the manager's point, I mean, these are really, they're nice signs, but they're really intended for somebody's front yard rather than a municipal display. I, I'm just bringing this idea up that, that if you do it next year, I understand the funding, but, you know, if you want to do this in the future, I would think that you would investigate finding signs that are meant to be on pub, you know, are, in, in the same scope as the other decorations that are up there, basically. I don't want somebody to, 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 you know, say Chardon is, this is, I don't want to put this, that we don't take these things seriously based on the size and scope of what's being put there this year. That is, it should be understood that it's only a temporary mean, thing until a better quality display can be, can be...
It wasn't just my choice, sir, it was a woman of Jewish faith that helped choose these. We were going to have a, one different menorah style that was going to be handmade, it was more expensive, but since it's handmade, it wasn't going to arrive on time.
Understood. Now, I support you doing this, I'm not, I fully support it, I'm just saying that maybe some, you know, this could be the beginning of something that next year that could be, could be better, that's all. And I appreciate your efforts and...
We're hoping that it will be better next year, but it's a first effort, and with, with, I, I just believe in being inclusive, and it, and I haven't seen it on our square, and it's our square, it's Juaga County, or the county seat. And it might not be perfect, it's not my ideal, but I think that this year, with all the hate that we have in this community, in the country, in the county, that I personally experienced and seen, that this is the year it must be go up, to have a representation of the cross-section of our community. And I feel very strongly about that, and I would, I just pray to be able to go forward with it this year, to have, it, it's not perfect, but it's something.
I'm looking at the weather forecast for next week, there are no big snowstorms forecast, I, this probably could happen within the scope of an hour, basically. Get it together, put the signs up, plug them in, and you're done.
Mary, how long do you, would you like these to stay up, being that they're different periods of time than the Christmas season as well? How do you see that working?
When is the manger usually disassembled? Because kwanzaa goes in...
Try to get them down as soon as possible after the New Year. As soon as there's a break in the weather, we try to get everything down, because we may not get another break for six weeks.
So, likewise. I mean, kwanzaa goes until January 1st, and I don't think there would be, you know, I could just go and remove the Hanukkah and dreidel, but it depends on the weather also.
Okay, so similar time period, then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But as I wrote, it happens to fall on this date, but they do not keep the Gregorian calendar for, for Hanukkah, so it does fluctuate year to year. Sometimes it's earlier, and sometimes it's later in the year. I, I haven't tabulated it out, but it's, it's based on lunar and some configuration that I don't keep my calendar by.
Okay, is there anything else for Mary? If there isn't, then we need a motion to permit the city manager to work in conjunction with Mary Briggs on the correct placement and assistance with the display of a menorah, the Hanukkah dreidel, and the kwanzaa display on City Square.
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Motion, and seconded, further discussion? Please call the question.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Lelko?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuhha?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Happy holidays, y'all, thank you so much.
I am, thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda item 8B, hearing from the general public. Just please identify yourself when you come up.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Robert Ryan, I'm a lifetime resident of Chardon. Thank you for listening. I just, I'm here to...
Your last name again?
Ryan.
Ryan?
It's R-E-I-N. This is actually a matter for the police, and I, I'm ashamed of myself for not calling when I saw this happen. October, or November 12th, I was coming into Chardon Route 6. A car, which I have no idea how fast, fast enough to go airborne, quite frankly, came through Loretto, straight over into Meadowlands, missed my car by a few feet, missed another car by just a few inches. It could have been horrible, but I just wish I would have called the police, quite frankly. I, I, I don't know why I didn't, I just can't explain why I didn't, but I was thinking that, since that road is seemingly not in use, there's no businesses or anything on it right now, a staggered roadblock there, because my feeling is, if this is some sort of a death wish, or something like that, or one of these challenges that people do, or whatever, I would at least not allow that to happen again. But that's, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, since I'm, it happened after last month's meeting, and I'm also, I should have called the police, because I always do when I see someone speeding, or by my house especially, you know? But I just wanted to bring it to your attention, that that happened on November 12th, about 1:00 PM, so...
Chief, what's your recommendation? I think you probably all have routinely seen something that isn't exactly great traffic issues, and what would be your recommendation on something like...
For sure. I think, obviously, I'll give you my card so that we can have a off, off-meeting conversation about what you saw, what happened there.
Okay.
So I can get some additional information for you, so that I can analyze what that problem is, and see if there's a recommendation for the group here, from us, but I have not, this is the first I've heard of this as well, so...
No one was injured in what you observed?
No, it was, it was just a miracle, quite frankly, that the car didn't hit someone. You know, it missed me by maybe 10 feet, it missed another car going out of town by literally inches, and then there was people at all four, or all three ways there, going through, coming out of Meadowlands, you know, going out of town. It was...
Was the light red?
It was tragic, I'm sorry.
Was the light...
No, the light was green, I was still moving, and then I never even seen the person coming, and now, every time I come home that way, I can't help but slow down and look, because, you know, it's just one of those things that, why someone would do that is, you know, who knows? Thank you for listening.
Of course, thank you for your observation, and Chief, you got your card form and all that?
Yeah, for sure. We routinely get calls from folks that are, as it's happening, folks will call.
Steve, is that a, that's an open, dedicated street, right?
Correct. It is. Thank you.
So, anyway, we, we routinely get calls from folks that are driving, they see something occurring, they'll call on the cell phone. Sometimes our officers are able to intercept vehicles that are driving recklessly. If we have verified information of the caller's identity, that, and they give a description of the actions that they saw or observed, an officer can affect a traffic stop based on those observations. And oftentimes, we'll find that, A, the driver's distracted, or in some cases, they're impaired, so we take appropriate action in those situations, so... But my advice to the public, if they see things happening, don't hesitate to give us a call at, at the time that it's occurring, and we'll do our best to address it.
Don't take things into their own hands, right?
Uh, no, that's a bad idea.
All right, well, thank you, Robert, for that observation once again. Anyone else with the general public? All right, thank you. Old business, we have no old business, new business, turning this portion of the agenda over to Councilman Means.
Thank you, Mayor. In your packets tonight is information regarding GTV. The current GTV contract expires this month, and council needs to determine the terms for 2023. A copy of the third quarter financial report, video-on-demand metrics for the Chardon Schools and GTV BoxCast, and square camera metrics were provided to you. Additionally, there is a summary of a November 8th meeting with Mr. Jevnikar and email correspondence that we've had since then. Mr. Jevnikar and I also met this week on Monday, December 5th, and we've had some additional email correspondence since then as well. Along with the conversations with GTV, I've also had three conversations with Dr. Hanlon over the last several weeks to better understand the school's partnership with GTV, their reliance on GTV, and their own capabilities to provide coverage of school-related events. I've spoken with several members of council in this last week, and so, who, with questions, and so I'd like to just kind of broadly address those. Regarding the BoxCast, during the first meeting with Mr. Jevnikar, most of our conversations focused on the reports that were provided. This is in your packet, this big bundle of reports. This was also a topic that I discussed with Dr. Hanlon. You may have noticed, on the one packet, it's got all, it kind of looks like this, and it says "Video On Demand," it's the Chardon High School BoxCast service. Under the source, it says "Chardon High School." Just to, just to clarify what the BoxCast is, an organization can set up a BoxCast service to livestream an event in real-time online, or links to those recordings can be posted on that organization's website to be viewed later. The organization can choose to provide this content at no charge or charge a fee, which is what the high school did this season during football. Pay-to-view is used by other local sports programs as well, this is not something that's uncommon. As an example, for the Kenston game, the 620 people paid $10 each to watch that game live via the BoxCast service. BoxCast charges a fee of 25%, and the remaining 75% went back to the school's athletic fund. And I mentioned in your summary in your packets that overall, for the football season, was $17,000, again, with 25% as a service fee to BoxCast. The high school can utilize BoxCast for home activities, sports, and other events. At the high school, there are unmanned cameras on the football field and in the gym. These are motion-activated and record sound. And I don't know if any of you had a chance to look at the high school website, there's examples of BoxCast videos. These are a broad view of the action going on. It's not the same quality as a produced video, that may have multiple angles and commentary. I liken it to a stadium, stadium experience. If you have kids at the stadium, and you're sitting there and you're watching it, that's kind of what it's like. The reporting metrics show that there is a lot of traffic for video-on-demand, although as Mr. Jevnikar noted during our first meeting, most people watch parts of the videos. They don't necessarily go and watch the whole thing, they watch the bit they're in or interested in. And the example I tried to give you in your packets was commencement. The square camera, which was replaced recently, a number of hits to the square camera continue to be quite high, the camera, if you don't know, is on top of the theater building. The, in your packets, you had the numbers for October. Updated stats for November show that it gets quite a bit of traffic. There were 5,242 unique views in no, in November, and of those people, they visited the camera, or they went to the camera 14,412 times. The total viewing time was 882 hours and some change, which is a crazy amount of time for people to be on that camera. For GTV cable, there are still, there are no metrics for the cable channel, so we're unable to know how many people utilize and rely on that service. In addition to looking at all of this through the lens of the video-on-demands, I also went and spent a significant amount of time over the last couple of months looking online up for not just school-related content, but Chardon city-related content. There is an abundance of online content, posts, pictures for Chardon city-related There is an abundance of online content, posts, pictures for Chardon city-related events, school-related events, and events, these go across social media platforms. And a lot of this overlaps content that's found on GTV. Mr. Jevnikar and I also talked about the financial report that he had submitted through September. You all received that report. It was forwarded on to you. He mentioned that his rent had increased, and some of his expenses have, are also higher this year. We discussed the difference between Chardon events versus events held in Chardon, and Mr. Jevnikar noted that Chardon has more events than other communities, so the city pays more than the other partners. I asked a number of questions about how he determines which of the four partners pay for what programming and the contribution of each community. And I asked a lot of questions. I've been asking a lot of questions, and Mr. Jevnikar has been nothing but forthcoming and commented on the number of questions, and that was all fine. Contributors for 2022, and this was asking about where's your source of revenue. Chardon pays 60, will pay approximately $64,000 this year, Chardon Township $41,000, Middlefield $27,000, and Munson $51,000, for a total of approximately $183,000. As mentioned in your packet summary, the Chardon Gridiron Club underwrote the football season at a cost of about $1,200 to $1,500 a game. The Gridiron Club funding is not part of any financial reports that we receive, because those vendors are paid directly by the Gridiron Club. You'll recall that although we had kept funding at 100% for 2022, it had been agreed upon that the cost of upgrading the cameras in council chambers would come out of that funding. That was approximately $14,500. Additionally, another $3,500 was spent replacing the square camera that's on top of the theater building. So approximately $18,000 was taken out of the overall budget used for hardware upgrades to the city. When we met on Monday this week, Mr. Jevnikar showed me an updated financial report. Currently, the available funds for Chardon-specific programming is depleted, and he mentioned that that's because of the money being taken out for the cameras. Specifically, the cameras here in this space. I asked the question directly about what it would look like if Chardon reduced funding, and he stated that city-specific programming would be reduced, and that he could produce a list of what would be cut if needed. He also reiterated his concern that if Chardon cuts funding, the other community partners could do the same. I responded, like I did last year, that I didn't think that council should make a decision for Chardon based on what other communities might do. Mr. Jevnikar reiterated that because expenses for one event may be assigned to more than one community partner, depleting funds or reducing the funds can affect the entire group. So, based on what I have learned myself, and looking at this and talking to the schools, my opinion hasn't changed, that I think it's appropriate for us to consider a reduction of funding for GTV. For me, the question is, is this the best use of taxpayer dollars, or would that money be better spent on different services that benefit the community? For me, this is not about the quality of service from GTV or the commitment from Dave Jevnikar personally. Rather, what I think this is about is changes in technology, like the availability of services like the BoxCast, the school's ability to use that, and the use of social media as communication tools, that lead me to believe that the service is less essential than it was even a couple of years ago.
Heather, I have a question, and maybe Dave would be better to answer this, but the income and expense by category sheet that you gave us for the, through the third quarter?
Yes.
These numbers are just for Chardon? Is that just for the city of Chardon?
Probably appropriate for Dave to come up and answer questions.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jevnikar, the numbers that we were provided-
Yes.
Are these only for the city of Chardon?
Yes.
Okay. So you know how much income you get from the city of Chardon. How are the expenses allocated to the city of Chardon?
Well, three or four different ways. If it's in a general administrative bill, then all the communities share in proportion to the funds that they contribute.
Proportional.
It's a ratio.
Okay.
If it's an event that only, say, only has Middlefield, then Middlefield is the only community that pays for that. If it's a Chardon example, the council meeting tonight, that's only a city expense. If it's a school district expense, right now, we spread that cost out amongst the three Chardon community. And if it's the Maple Festival, we only assess costs that relate, you know, just to those three communities, Chardon Township, Munson Township, and the city.
I thought you said in, I thought it was said in here that the festival was considered Chardon activity.
I didn't say that.
When I asked you during our first meeting if Chardon, if the Maple Festival was a Chardon event or an event in Chardon, you said it was a Chardon event.
You must have misunderstood.
Okay.
Is that what it says?
One of the things, Heather, we also discussed was the idea that originally, way back, it was a county-wide event, and then we trimmed that back, so it was a Chardon-area event. Maybe that's what you misunderstood. In other words, Burton and Middlefield were, years ago, because it was a county Maple Festival, participated in the costs that relate to the festival. But later, later on, I think it became, it's more of a Chardon-centric event, those communities were then taken out of the formula.
You're right. I don't recall any of that conversation.
I, how has the festival changed? It's still the Jogga County Maple Festival.
Participation has changed. You probably don't recall, but as a youth, all the bands used to march in the parade. Berkshire's band marched in the parade. West Jogga's band marched in the parade. Newberry's band. And it just has become less and less and less, and now the only band that marches in the parade is Chardon's. And that, that's a, that's a subjective thing, Dave. I mean, you can, you can look at different, different concepts, different programs, and say, well, that applies to everybody, or it doesn't apply to everybody.
My takeaway from all this was, is the amount of programming that is put together, produced, whatever you want to call it, by the school. That may go out under GTV, but is still a school-created event. Is that true?
So, I'm sure you'll correct me. There is, you know, they're quite intermingled in a lot of cases. The school has the capability to do programming. They rely on GTV for some. They have the ability to do their own. It's not the same as having a GTV-produced video, but it's, they're capable of doing it. I specifically asked about the Board of Education meetings as an example. The city, or the school has the capability to broadcast their own Board of Education meetings. They don't right now, because GTV doesn't. It would not be necessarily the same quality, but would it be a video that you could watch and understand? And yes, of course it would be.
Yeah, Mike Hanlon bought a camera and a microphone, and there have been a couple meetings, not recently, but back in the COVID days, where the camera was put in the corner of the room. It was a wide angle. The microphone was put out, and that's how they covered the meeting. When we do the meetings, we have microphones, not unlike you have in here at all the different board members' desks. We have a camera in the back. We integrate with their television system, so when Deb Armbruster's doing the financials, we're able to integrate what she's talking about into the program. We post-produce it afterwards. They don't want it streamed anymore, now that COVID's over with. So we bring the file back. We do all the post. We put it up on, we air it on Channel 1025, and we put it up on our VOD site. The last four years, the school has probably produced five or six events. You can consider that camera in the ceiling of the gym, or the camera on the press box that goes back and forth like that as producing an event, I guess, if you want to. I don't consider that a produced event.
So, Heather, going back to your feeling about a possible reduction, what would be the basis of that conclusion in summary?
I think the school is increasing its own capabilities, because GTV is predominantly school programming. I think the school has the capability to do more on their own. I also think that if you spend time online navigating all the different social media sites, the school's website, including the school, the school has incredibly active, for example, their athletic account on Twitter. I wasn't able to make it to the volleyball, the last game for the volleyball season, but I was watching it in real, I was working and I had Twitter open, and in real time, they're posting the scores. Now, that's not the same as a video, but GTV would not have been there anyway. My point is, is that some of these things, they're, they're all out there already. They're already, some of the stuff is already being done, and there's an overlap. There's a really nice video of the Maple Festival that's on YouTube right now. I went and looked at it today. It's really well-done. It was done by somebody else. You know, I'm just saying that there's a lot of overlap, and when I, again, to me, I think that because of changes in technology, I think people, every person has a phone, a recording device in their pocket. You know, when I went to my daughter's band concerts, I recorded them and what they were doing. I didn't, you know, I'm just saying that I think things are changing, and I, I think when we're looking at the funds, knowing all the things, other things that that money could go towards, I think that that's a better allocation of that funding. However, you know, it's certainly not my decision alone to make. I think I've probably spent the most time on it, and, but it's, you know, it's not my decision alone.
Since we bought the cameras, and that was for the reduction, why would we need another reduction?
There are other projects I know within the building, like, for example, in the conference room, other technology upgrades that we, that would be beneficial have. I mean, if you've been in a conference in the conference room, as an example. I don't, and I guess the thing I'm going to say is, I don't feel like I have to justify, like, tonight, where that money needs to go. I'm looking at this as a fund of money that gets spent on a public service. It is my opinion that that service is less essential than perhaps some of the others. So I don't, I guess what I feel like is that I don't have to say to you, this is how we spend that money.
Right.
I'm saying to you that I think that that is, that, that's my justification. I think the money is better spent somewhere else. If you all disagree, then, you know, you disagree. But I don't think it's, I don't think we should just, you know, that we should, we should be looking at this critically, and not just doing the same thing year after year, simply because that's what we've been doing.
Going back to the Maple Festival, do they contribute anything to GTV? The Maple Festival? No financials?
I mean, I, almost any activity that we cover doesn't contribute. I can't think of one that does. You could say the Gridiron Club thing might have been, but that's different. I mean, we did that this year, and as I said to Heather, I'm not sure they're going to do it next year. Our, because we don't have enough money, we can't do as many events as we'd like to do. And we don't cover playoff games in any sport, because every sport gets into the playoffs, even football now. Everybody gets into the playoffs. So we just don't have enough money to do playoff coverage unless someone else steps up. And the only sport that anyone's going to step up for, in this area at least, is football. So the Gridiron Club raises the funds, paid for the production costs. The school sold the tickets. They made something on it, too. GTV essentially got, I'll call it, free programming. The Gridiron Club, it was a fundraiser for them, and the school district made money on the ticket sales through BoxCast. So I think it was a positive thing for all three, all three of us. But again, I don't know whether the Gridiron Club will do it next year. I don't think they made as much money this year as they made in the past, and that's going to be their call, as to whether they'd be interested in doing it again next year.
I guess I see a large portion also going to equipment. We were-
That's not always the case, Dave. It was the case this year because of, you know, and we saved the city a bunch of money by doing it ourselves. It was $14,000, $15,000 to do this, and I guarantee you, if you did the RFPs and all the things government loves to do, you probably would have brought in a consultant, or at least had some bids, and gone through that whole thing, and had different people come in and do stuff. And then they would have done the installation, and they would have charged you in addition to the equipment costs that you paid for. So, you know, we saved, we saved some money with this, with this project. And it's ironic in a way that these camera, the camera in the ceiling of the gym and the one on the stadium, it's very low quality. It's okay. It's not great. But we certainly didn't put one back here for council chambers. Council got a really good video system here.
I guess I'm just going to add one more part to this. I mean, we don't have people coming to us and saying they're relying, we don't come, people have people coming to us and asking for more, you know, programming, or an expansion of programs, or concerns that we're cutting this service. We do have people coming to us saying, I'm concerned about safety on the trailheads. I'm concerned about safety, or the vandalism at Melharter Park. You know, we have people coming to us with concerns about other things. This is not one of them.
Has anyone heard that it may be at risk?
I know that they did last year, when there was a message put on-
Yeah, I mean, that's last year. It's-
Right. I'm just saying, but nobody, but nobody did then, when that was happening. I mean-
I, I mean, I did, but that's maybe I'm the only one. So Heather's proposing a 20% reduction, not an elimination. Is that correct?
Right, and I'm, right, I would actually propose that we reduce the budget by $20,000, similar to what we took out last, this year. That's about a third.
It's a third, okay.
I guess I'd like to know what the ramifications of that would be. And I don't know if I necessarily need that answer tonight.
Simply stated, if we go, our total number, I think Heather said it was about 183,000, so we drop it to 163. Your participation percentage drops, our fixed costs do not. So the gap between the gross revenue and the fixed becomes less. That, that difference between the fixed cost and the gross revenue is where we can have variable programming, where we have people from outside that do events. Example, tonight, we've got Brett, that's a variable cost. He is not a full-time employee. I have another variable cost person over at Park Elementary right now shooting a band concert. Ryan, who's my fixed cost, is in Middlefield tonight doing a band concert. So if I don't have the money for the variable costs, then that concert doesn't get done. I'm sure that we'll always do council meetings, because that would be something you would insist upon, but that is a variable cost. So as those variable, as that variable cost number gets smaller, we're able to do less and less.
So looking at your income expense statement, the, you have a payroll service, you have payroll, which is your full-time employee, that you're talking about?
Brian and I are employees.
You're covering payroll.
Right.
Then you have a production cost, and that, is that mostly you're paying third parties to-
That's mostly, that's Brian again.
Okay. And then talent is?
Those are announcers.
Announcers.
And that's a variable cost. We don't have announcers, then we don't do, we don't have the money to pay an announcer, we don't do sporting events.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure why the city is subsidizing school board activities.
That's a town-gone question. Right, right. That's something we've done forever, but I understand it. That's a town-gone question.
Yeah. So if there was a reduction in income from us, that would be the logical place to reduce services.
I was, if I read this information correctly, the viewership of these meetings is quite low.
Of these meetings?
Yes. Right?
Oh, I suspect it's quite low.
Yeah, I mean, if I read it right.
Yeah.
I know. It's nobody's fault. I'm just saying.
It's compelling, it's compelling stuff, Dave.
I was just, I just, I was a little surprised how low those numbers were.
And it's in high depth now, too.
Maybe that's why.
Maybe that's why.
I guess I always knew that it was mainly a school-
We've never hidden that. 70, 80%, absolutely, since day one.
Oh, yeah.
There isn't that much happening in our town.
Oh, right. But- But looking at the, looking at the data, it really jumps out how much it is school. Just a question, have we ever had a complaint having that camera up on the theater?
No.
Complaint?
In fact, I got a call the other day, I guess there was an incident. Someone asked whether we were recording that camera, and we are not, and we can, but we are not. Problem with that is it's, it does pan. So you wouldn't necessarily get the whole, you know, kind of static shot. But this new camera is just fabulous. I mean, it's, it blows, these numbers have blown, absolutely blown me away. It's crazy. Maybe you heard, maybe you didn't, Betsy Kling, Channel 3 went crazy over it. The National Weather Service in Cleveland's also excited about it, too.
So the word to the wise is, if you're out there with someone you shouldn't be with, don't go near that camera.
And you, and you know better, you know better than I how many cameras are on the square, right?
Dave, who owns the camera on top of the theater building?
GTV. It's one of, some of the, it's one of the pieces of equipment we have.
So you own the camera on the building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So that wasn't part of the equipment cost in your statement?
I don't know when that was. What's the date of that? Yeah, that's, that's part of it.
It is part of it, but it's divided up between three communities.
Yeah.
The cost of the camera is divided up between three communities.
Why is the cost of the camera divided between three communities?
Well, again, that's, that's back to how you characterize this, that, or the other thing when you pay the bill. Generally, equipment is allocated across all communities, like a camera or recorder or video, you know, video recorder, that type of thing. This one was allocated to the three Chardon communities because it's a Chardon-centric item. If the city wants to shift that so that it increases the, the expense as it relates to the city, then that, I would certainly listen to that.
Well, if I understood this, so this is your cost of equipment, we're paying for it, but then you contend that you still own, that you still own it.
That's always been the way, that's always been the way it's been since day one, Andy. We're actually, we're required at the end of this thing, when GTV goes away, to transfer all this equipment to another nonprofit. When we, when we do the wind-up, that's part of the wind-up of 501(c)(3), that's where the assets have to go, yes.
The 5%, is that all or none? Can it be reduced to, say, 3%?
Well, that's, that's essentially what Heather's talking about.
No, no, no.
You're talking about the fees?
The fees.
I don't...
Instead of charging the resident 5%.
Oh, yeah. Chester Township eliminated the fee.
Yes, but can it be reduced somewhere between zero and five?
Yes, Mary Samidi reduced the, the fee in Munson years ago from three to one and a half percent.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And you don't, it's, it's a completely arbitrary number in terms, oh, it's a max of five. And after that, you can do whatever you want to be 20, sure. One of the, one of the problems with the reduction, and I'll go through it now, there is very little difference in the cable consumption in this part of the, in Joga County. Most people kind of buy about the same amount of cable. So the average cable bill is about the same, whether it's in Munson Township or Chardon Township or in the city. So that means the, the average fee that's assessed on the bill is about the same, right? It's 5% of the bill. So let's say the, let's just pick a number, $10. Let's say the cable fee on everybody's bill is 10 bucks, all right? It's 10 bucks for Resident Munson, 10 bucks for somebody who lives in Chardon Township, and 10 bucks for somebody who lives in the city. If you reduce our support and keep the money, let's say you, you keep 3 bucks, all right? Then somebody in the, the city is going to a movie and paying 7 bucks, and somebody in Munson or Chardon is going to be paying 10 bucks for the same movie. It's the same service. It's like going to dinner and I buy the salad and the dessert, you just buy the entree. I pay 10 bucks, you pay 7, 7 bucks, right? You get less, right? But that's not how it is here. You're all, we're all getting the same movie, right?
I just want to go back to the, our previous discussion about when you, the disposition of the equipment. I'm looking at page eight of the contract, and it says that, "In the event that the company or programming server shall fail to exist after a certain date, the company, after winding up its affair, shall dispose of any remaining assets or equipment by donating those remaining assets to the Joga County Educational Center or distributing the proceeds of an auction of those assets to the participating communities in proportion to the contributions made." I just want to clarify that that's, it doesn't say anything here about going to...
Well, it was the Board of, it was, it was the County Board of Education I was thinking about, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. I mean, and one difference, we, we went through this last year with this, this equipment in here. Randy was insistent that this not be GTV equipment. We agreed to that because the city actually purchased the equipment. They went through their purchase order system. We didn't buy it and install it. The city bought it, so they're thinking, we reimburse the city out of the monies that we'd received.
I gotta ask on this, the income and expenses you're showing in the hall, but if you had included the gridiron, you, you would have come out even, right?
I'm not sure I understand that.
I think if, if you added the gridiron contribution to the income side of the ledger, that you wouldn't be in the negative. Is that true?
I don't understand that at all.
What do you mean?
The iron portion, they paid directly the employees?
I don't know.
So it's a net, that's what it said?
Yeah, we never saw...
Zero. There's no impact to this statement here. It's a net zero to this.
Right, right.
Yeah, the gridiron, that was, it's completely like, they're paying people directly.
Right.
So what Dave was saying was he essentially got the programming for free, right? So he could use everything and it was paid for by the Gridiron Club.
Right.
So those, those costs then are not reflected in your production and talent costs? So those costs are on top of...
So the wash.
Well, they're not paid for either.
He was being consulted by the Gridiron Club to provide a service.
They paid you too? They paid you and, as well?
How much did they cut it?
No, I didn't get a penny.
How much did they cut it?
So you volunteered your time at all the football games?
Yeah.
What is it?
Okay.
You could say yes and no. I mean, I was working and, I mean, I do it at the press box and all the other stuff, but I'm down there setting up the equipment with Brian, and we're, we're down there Friday afternoons doing all the stuff. You could say, oh, I'm, GTV's paying me to do it, I guess. You know, you could look at it that way, I guess.
Well, I mean, you're, you're, you're on the payroll, your staff or GTV, so it's a valid question to ask.
Yeah, yeah. But like, the Gridiron didn't pay me any.
Understood. That's what I think Dave was trying to clarify. So look, my, my recommendation would be to reduce funding if everyone else, if, I, I think we, if you don't feel it, if you don't have the stomach for it, then just say that, if you don't want to reduce funding.
Do you want to make a motion?
I would make a motion to reduce funding to GTV.
By how much?
By how much?
I proposed a third, approximately $20,000 or a set amount of $20,000 similar to what we did in this last year. Although, since we don't own the whole camera, or we, or we don't own the camera, it was actually a little bit less. It was 14,000, I think 589 for the cameras for this space, and then our portion of the $3,500 of the camera. So we didn't actually withhold, take out $20,000. That would be my recommendation. That is my motion, with no caveats.
I'll second the motion.
I have to call for discussion. Any discussion?
I'm just thinking about going down, just...
Heather, how much in, in camera cost last year do you think, was it?
Fifteen, it was almost $15,000 for this room, and then we paid a portion of the camera that is on top of the theater building, which cost a total of $3,500.
We paid about a third?
We paid a third.
Say a thousand. Let's just say five.
Okay.
So it was about...
$16,000, if you want to say.
See, do you anticipate, Dave, having any other equipment expense to keep your productions viable?
Major ones? No.
In 2023?
I mean, it, it comes and goes. It's, 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 you know, we, we just got a new server this, as well, this fall. So it's been, been a big expense year. The, the only thing I wanted to purchase, but it's not going to happen, is a, another software hardware module that relates to public meetings. And it's a, it's a way of tracking agendas along with the, the actual recording. So there's, there's bookmarks throughout. This is a very common, most bigger cities have this feature in their, a company called Granicus actually does it. It's a fabulous video system and it's also bookmarks the things through the agenda. So you can, you can go through a, a meeting and find out that those areas that you're interested in very quickly. But that's not going to happen.
Dave, you look like you said something.
Would you be open to maybe reducing your number just to 10?
To what?
Say 16?
Yes.
Match that.
You want to match it from this year? Sure.
And one of the questions Heather asked, how, how did we get through this year because we had that 14, 15,000 hit on the $20,000 that, that was, was a reduction? We were, we were, and been working off of what I call the COVID reserve, because back in the COVID year, we laid Ryan off, didn't have a lot of expenses that year, and got, got that surprise check of 24,000 in the fall that related to the monies that had been held back by the, the city because of the 50% COVID rule. So we hadn't had expenses, got that, and we've been sort of working that down over the last year. So the last year, we've been able to about be at zero now, even in spite of the fact that we spent 15, 16,000 on equipment this year. That expenditure won't be there next year, but it sounds like neither will the revenue.
So Heather, you're amending your motion?
To 16,000.
Is the second amended?
I will amend my second to match the motion.
Is there any further discussion?
Let's have the motion read back.
Amy?
Well, I was going to ask for clarification because originally you said reduction by a third or 20, so is it...
We're going to reduce it by 16,000.
So the third does not factor in at all?
Okay.
Just thank you.
I just have a couple concluding remarks. One, I'd like to see if there is a reduction in your services, the, I would think that if that was threatened, that the school board and maybe the general public would have something to say about it. And I would like to hear them if that, if that is in fact the case. If we don't hear that, then I have a problem with us continuing to subsidize video production for the school. And maybe at some point, we want to look to Dave's point at reducing the percentage that, that we're collecting from cable subscribers.
Yeah, there are communities that, as I said, Chester and Beameridge, don't think it's appropriate at all to have, to assess the fee without, in Chester's particular situation, without providing the cable ser, without providing a GTV service.
Right. Now, I value what you do for us here, and I think we should continue to pay for that, but that's, that's not a discussion we're going to have this evening.
And, and, and Andy, you're, you're a really, you're a brilliant guy, but, but there isn't a school district in the state of Ohio that's going to come to you and say what you just asked for. They're not, they're never going to complain about that at all.
All right.
You, you know that, right?
I don't know that, no, frankly, I don't.
Yes, you do.
I'm happy with just audio on Friday nights and...
That'll be tough to do. That'll be tough to do.
Yeah.
It's a variable cost, right? It's a thousand bucks a year. It'll be tough to do.
Mm-hmm. And I'm, I communicate with people that are at the game to get, like, even Kyle one night, I was, how many yards was that? And, you know, I've tested you, Dave, about the score not being updated on GTV or it had the wrong field listed. But, so I'm, I'm okay with the audio on Friday nights, but...
And some of the, some of the, I'll call it the, the icing on the cake stuff, obviously you're saying, forget it, and that's going to be forgotten.
So for clarity on the motion that's before council, the city and GTV currently have a contract with a one-year term that's set to expire on December 27th. What I'm hearing the motion do is authorize the city manager and the administration to prepare an amended agreement, which keeps all the, all the terms the same, except for the portion of the agreement that has a proviso that contemplates $20,000 being reduced. That term is going to be modified if this motion passes to be a total of $16,000. Is that an accurate direction from council? Thank you.
From my standpoint, I'd, I think 16, I mean, that's, we're probably putting them right towards the edge, and if that's what I guess we want to do, then I'd rather see us do 10 versus 16, but...
Well, if this motion fails, then we still need direction from council as to whether an agreement is going to be passed. So there will need to be a separate motion.
I just wanted to share my point during discussion.
So if this motion fails, we'll either need a motion in a different amount, or a motion for no contract, or a motion for a contract at full reimbursement.
So perhaps we should call the question then.
And this is on 16, right?
This is on reduce funding to GTV by 16,000. Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
No.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Stay.
Heather, to your, Heather, to your point, I think the group needs to have a discussion at some point, maybe as part of the budget process, proper allocation, what we consider the proper allocation of the fees that the city's receiving.
I don't know who does that, like, where that falls, but certainly we...
Not tonight, but it's...
No, no, I understand.
Be a finance committee?
Yes.
Because I, for one, am not in favor of just putting it into the general fund for just any reason.
All right, moving on to Agenda Number 11 legislation. A, would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none?
An ordinance vacating Memorial Drive and the adjacent public right-of-way pursuant to Section 723.05 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time? So moved. Second. Movement, second in discussion? Call the question?
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Motion carries number, and read it, please.
Ordinance Number 3226, an ordinance vacating Memorial Drive and the adjacent public right-of-way pursuant to Section 723.05 of the Ohio Revised Code. Ordinance Number 3226, an ordinance vacating Memorial Drive and the adjacent public right-of-way pursuant to Section 723.05 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Is there a motion for the adoption of Ordinance Number 3226? So moved.
Second.
Movement, second in discussion? Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, you have before it an ordinance vacating Memorial Drive and the adjacent public right-of-way. The, their portion of Memorial Drive has been dedicated public right-of-way and available for the public for years. The process to vacate it is something that the council and the administration has been exploring. When you vacate right-of-way, the property reverts back to the adjacent property owners. In a situation such as this, where the adjacent property owners have consented to obtain ownership of the property upon the vacation, you can waive certain procedures and expedite the vacation process. Everything necessary for that to take place has...
Everything necessary for that to take place has taken place. So if council acts on this, a vacation plat will be filed and the memorial drive will revert to the adjacent property owners. In this instance, for Memorial Drive, that's the school district and one property owner who's going to be deeding their portion to the school as well.
So there's no way that the school will lose use of that, what I consider a driveway?
They will be the title owner of the property.
Be responsible for maintenance and upkeep.
A hundred percent. Yes, sir.
Refer to them. For as long as they hold their property.
Unless they decide to transfer to someone else.
Because that was always a concern about vacating to who it would go to and to make sure that that driveway would always be usable by the school.
Yep.
So this, I did mention that all these vacation plats that are before you this evening were, of course, approved unanimously by planning commission. And this particular one, Memorial Drive, has a long history with the city, going way back into the 1990s when there were attempts to determine what to be done with that driveway. And I'm glad it's coming to a final conclusion this evening.
Very good. Any other questions for Ben? Call the question.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Agenda item 11B, would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none.
An ordinance vacating Sixth Avenue and the adjacent public right-of-way pursuant to Section 723.05 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second. Move to second and discussion. Call the question.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3227, an ordinance vacating Sixth Avenue and the adjacent public right-of-way pursuant to Section 723.05 of the Ohio Revised Code. Ordinance number 3227, an ordinance vacating Sixth Avenue and the adjacent public right-of-way pursuant to Section 723.05 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3227?
So moved.
Second.
Move to second and discussion. Ben again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, you have before it an ordinance vacating Sixth Avenue and the adjacent public right-of-way. The law and everything is the exact same as we just talked about with Memorial Drive. Rather than bore you with the details, I'll just state that Doug Courtney and Paul Horniac worked very hard on both of these, and they deserve all the credit in the world. And you guys should give them a pat on the back.
Wow.
And I want to reiterate that, especially for Paul, because it's something that we've talked about and been on the, hopefully, to-do list to get done someday. So really happy that it's been accomplished. And it's, it's, it sounds like it's an easy task, but it really wasn't.
So would the engineer explain for the public who may not be aware, where exactly is Sixth Avenue that we're vacating?
Sixth Avenue sits between, for landmarks, referencing landmarks, sits between Chardon Custom Polymers and the building that houses everybody's gym. And it just looks like an industrial driveway at this.
Public would never know it's.
It's between, yeah, Washington and.
Between Washington and Fifth.
There's a street light and a stop sign right there, right?
Street light and a stop sign?
Yeah. Is that, I'm not.
No, this is about halfway between Center Street and Fifth.
I'm sorry, not a street light.
Overhead light.
Overhead.
Not a traffic light.
Yeah.
Street light.
Yep.
Thank you.
But it does end into the trail. Correct.
All right, any further questions for Ben? Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Agenda item 11C, would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none.
An ordinance accepting certain public improvements dedicated by Redwood Chardon for public use, authorizing the recording of an easement dedication plat and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second.
Move to second and discussion. Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3228, an ordinance accepting certain public improvements dedicated by Redwood Chardon for public use, authorizing the recording of an easement dedication plat and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 3228, an ordinance accepting certain public improvements dedicated by Redwood Chardon for public use, authorizing the recording of an easement dedication plat and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3228?
So moved.
Second.
Move to second and discussion. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So council, you have before it an ordinance accepting certain public improvements dedicated by Redwood Chardon for public use, authorizing the recording of an easement dedication plat and declaring an emergency. Redwood Chardon is a residential development located in the corner of Center and Seventh. Water mains, gravity, sanitary sewer mains have been instructed and approved by our esteemed city engineer, and they are ready to be dedicated to the public for their use. This ordinance accepts it and authorize the filing of a dedication plat to make them the publics.
We have an attendee here tonight who has something to do with Redwood, correct? Is he? He sure does. Chuck, are you here to answer any questions?
Good evening. I'm Chuck Grasser, Director of Development for Redwood Living. And I first off want to thank Mr. Yeney, Mr. Courtney, and Mr. Horniac for all their hard work in getting this over the finish line. At this point, I'm here to ask any questions you might have about our project or about Redwood in general.
Are any of the roadways included in this?
No, the roadways are private and will be maintained by private.
Thank you.
Are things on schedule for the most part as far as?
Well, they're on schedule.
We agreed on, I don't know.
That's a tricky question, Mr. Mayor. In some cases, I would say, yes, we're on schedule. In other cases, I would say, no, we're not on schedule. As we all know, as residents of this part of the area, winter is just a joy. And it's a special joy for the construction industry. So we're probably a little behind schedule. However, we are, we do have some buildings up, sided, roofed, and we are working well with them. We are struggling right now with First Energy. And First Energy having transformer shortages and equipment shortages and that have, they're really, it's really becoming a problem. And not just for this particular site, all over Ohio, Detroit Edison in Michigan, ComEd in Chicago, if I named the locality, everyone's having problems with electrical equipment right now and getting it. That's probably our biggest problem.
Even Doug, you concur on?
Yes, I seem, that seems to be the trend with First Energy is their equipment shortages. And the hurricanes certainly didn't help either.
And this isn't new. If you recall, it's affected Thistle Creek, you know, this time last year also. So we're going on, we're well over probably a year of this.
Good. Are there any questions for Ben, Chuck, or anybody on staff? Chuck, we appreciate your participation tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate you going through this for me.
There is no other questions? Call the question.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Agenda item 11D was an addition. I hope you all got copies of that coming in tonight. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none.
An ordinance amending appropriations in the City of Chardon Treasury for 2022 and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second.
Move to second and? Discussion. Call the question.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yeah.
Mr. Grau?
Yes. Motion carries number and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3229, an ordinance amending appropriations in the City of Chardon Treasury for 2022 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 3229, an ordinance amending appropriations in the City of Chardon Treasury for 2022 and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3229? Yes.
So moved.
And second.
Move to second and discussion. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, you have before you an amended appropriations ordinance for your review and consideration. This amendment is necessary to ensure that actual revenues will cover final appropriations. At this time, it is necessary to reduce appropriations for Fund 452, General Capital Improvement Reserve, due to grant funding projected for 2022 not being fully collected until 2023. This reduction is possible due to the following items not being purchased in 2022. Colimbarium, approximately $10,000, electric charging station at Park Avenue Trailhead, approximately $25,000, pickup truck, approximately $17,500, and a combination of other reductions from Parks.
Can you remind me again what a colimbarium is?
For earns.
Oh, that's, okay, I did. Yes. The structure that you can put individual earns in, and it's, okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mark? Hearing none. Call the question.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Agenda item number 11E, would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none.
An ordinance to make temporary appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Chardon, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the question.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3230, an ordinance to make temporary appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Chardon, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 3230, an ordinance to make temporary appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Chardon, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3230?
So moved.
Second.
Move to second and discussion. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, you have before you an ordinance to allocate temporary appropriations for 2023. These appropriations are intended to cover personnel and certain operating costs for the first quarter of 2023, other routine and known operating costs for the entire year, and the projects approved by city council in the 2023 through 2027 capital improvement plan, excluding the county building renovation, since these funds will not be needed in the first quarter of 2023. In addition to what council originally approved, we're asking for an additional $9,500 to cover improvements to the John Memorial Fund.
Mark or Randy, do we know what those improvements to the John Bowl Memorial are going to be?
So that funding is to move the memorial to over in front of our building here. We have worked with Matt McCune of McCune Design to, and he's drawn some renderings for us of what that potentially could look like. So right now, we're at the stage where the renderings have been done. We have an idea what we'd like to present, bring back to present to you. And we're in the process of getting pricing for the monument itself. Monument, some of the challenge we've run into is supply chain there, but we don't have pricing yet either for that. So that's kind of where we're at at this point.
Thank you. That's envisioned to be in front of the chief's office over here.
One additional item that I need to mention in the temporary budget is a change in the classification and pay plan for the municipal court for the position of C1 probation secretary, part-time, to C1 probation clerk, full and part-time. That position, it'll be the same position, but transferring the person from part-time to full-time due to increased workloads and the requirements that they have to meet. No change in the hourly rate of that position, but it is included in personnel under the municipal court.
All right, I have further questions for Mark and/or Randy. Call the question.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Agenda item 11F, would anyone like this resolution read in its entirety? Hearing none.
A resolution requesting the county auditor to make tax advances during the year 2023.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second.
Move to second and motion, or discussion. Mark again.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, this is a resolution that is passed by city council each year. It will allow the city to request and receive advanced payments of property taxes collected by the county auditor, rather than waiting to receive the full allocation when the taxes are all collected and finalized by the county auditor.
Hey, Mark, hold on one second. I didn't call the question. On discussion, call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Sorry, Mark, we'll get right back.
Right about that.
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Resolution number 21-22, a resolution requesting the county auditor to make tax advances during the year 2023. Resolution number 21-22, a resolution requesting the county auditor to make tax advances during the year 2023.
Is there a motion for the adoption of resolution number 2122?
So moved.
Second.
Move to second and discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, this is a resolution that is passed by city council each year. It will allow the city to request and receive advanced payments of property taxes collected by the county auditor, rather than waiting to receive the full allocation when the taxes are all collected and finalized by the county auditor.
Are there any questions for Mark on this resolution? Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Very good. Moving on to agenda item number 12, review of expenditures. Daniel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did, Andy and I reviewed them last Saturday